It is seven o'clock, so we're gonna get our meeting started tonight. So first item on our agenda is we have a public hearing, which is the 2019 Neighborhood Assistance Grant, and I see Mark, you are here, so we can start with that. Could I ask the town manager to give an overview of this? And we can call up Mark to give an overview, and then we'll open it to the public for any comments.
For years, most of you remember, we do a Neighborhood Assistance Grant. It's usually for projects for nonprofits. The Y has done a few projects over the years, and I believe Mr. Poole is gonna explain what projects he wants us to move forward with tonight. And I know it's a phase, I'm not sure what phase it is, but one of the phases at Sloper's. So, Mr. Poole, anytime you're ready.
And once Mr. Poole gives his overview, then I will open the microphone up to the public for any comments for or against the Neighborhood Assistance Grant. Mr. Poole.
Thank you very much again, Mark Poole, 1000 East Street, Southington. So we're here again talking about the Neighborhood Assistance Act. That is for our Save Sloper Pond project. As I stated at the last town council meeting, the pond is following its natural life course. It's aging, it's going from pond to swamp to meadow, and it has been such a community resource and a community gem. Our opinion is it's the centerpiece of that 143-acre piece of property, and Cornelius Sloper Neal was so generous to donate that property, including the pond, in 1949, and it's on our watch to be able to make sure that it's here for generations to come. So, the study of the pond has gone back five-plus years, and what we need to do is to dredge the pond. Ideally, we had hoped to take 125,000 cubic yards of silt and sediment out of the pond. We've had to scale that back to about 90,000 and phase it out into two different phases, because the RFPs came back roughly $6 to $11 million. So we have kind of a new plan in place, Phase One, taking care of some of the critical areas around the beaches, installing an underwater berm that will help prevent the inland silt coming in, a drawdown valve that'll expose that berm so that we can continue preventative maintenance on the pond. And then, if the funding gets to where we need it to be, we would have additional dredging of the pond on the north corner, north end of the pond, where we would take out additional silt and sediment. The pond would most likely be closed for two years, and we need to have some sort of aquatic recreational facility.
Wait a second, Mr. Chairman. Tom, what do you think after closing the pond for two years?
There'll be no plunging.
Your team is in trouble.
Yeah, we're gonna have to talk about the polar plunge.
I know that many of us on the council are concerned about jumping in 2020. That won't be a problem.
Yay. I won't get asked for two years.
We will have alternative plans in January for plunging, for all of our councillor friends.
Excellent.
Oh, my gosh.
So we may have no aquatic recreational facilities in the summer for up to two years, so we're going out to the community and foundations, and this part of this Neighborhood Assistance Act would be to help support the overall scope of the work, which includes putting a splash pad and some additional bathrooms in, so that we do have some aquatic recreational facilities during the dredge, and then after the pond is back to normal, we'll have double the facilities up at YMCA Camp Sloper to serve the community. So that is what the funding is going for, and we're hopeful for community support tonight.
Excellent. And Mark, I know I said it at the last meeting, but I want to thank you again on behalf of the council for all that you do for our community. So, through the school system, the community at large, you really do a lot for us, and we appreciate it, so it's our pleasure to support your grant this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're happy to be community partners.
Excellent. So the microphone is now open, if anyone would like to come forward and speak about the Neighborhood Assistance Grant specifically for the Southington YMCA Camp Sloper. Great. If you, please come up to the microphone, and you can state your name and address.
You can sit down if you wish, sir, we'll just...
Can we, maybe?
I can probably hold on to this.
You're sure you're okay?
My name's Al Fonstock, I'm a resident of Southington. And this Friday's June 7th...
Sir, would you mind just stating your address as well for the record?
Okay, excuse me. 91 Cedar Drive, Southington.
Thank you.
And this Friday's June edition of the Citizen Southington, Citizen, YMCA pursues funding for Pond Work Slopers. Ms. Mocelli, Council Vice Chair, states Sloper's Pond is a community gem. I definitely agree. Mr. Mark Poole, CEO of the Y, states, "When it's done, we'll have a beautiful pond." I disagree. I feel that, I feel Mr. Poole's statement is putting the cart in front of the horse. To me, it's like a crystal ball outlook. If the pond is dredged, I believe it'll have a most damaging effect on the pond's ecology, both with inside the pond, for our wildlife inside the pond, fish, turtles, et cetera. I believe it will have an effect on the ecology outside of the pond also. We have wildlife that visits the pond continuously. I've been to Sloper's over many years, fishing, et cetera. You can see deer, all kinds of animals, raccoons and that, coming to the pond for water and food sources, such as, like I mentioned, waterfowl especially, deer, bobcats, things like that. I haven't seen a bobcat, but I know there's a lot of wildlife that comes to the pond. And this dredging, et cetera, and all the construction work and noise and that, will have effect on the ecology of these critters and animals that come to the pond. If, after a prolonged period of dredging, and a minimum of a two-year wait for swimming, exactly what will be left for the ecology of Sloper's Pond, within the pond and outside of the pond? As I previously stated, it could possibly become a mud hole. Has the DEP or any other organization conducted an in-depth study of the overall environmental impact of dredging Sloper's? Also approximately, it was said that at some times Sloper's may turn into a swamp. Has there been any type of study as for how many years this will take in order to become into effect, if it does? Is it 10 years, 20 years, 30 years? I have no idea. As far as I'm concerned, as I look at it, only a very small area of the pond is for swimming. The rest, as I can see from when I've been there, is for canoeing, fishing, nature observing, et cetera. And also outside, there's campgrounds for the kids, et cetera. I look at it as there's additional $1 million for a waterslide, plus possible dredging costs. I really don't like what I'm hearing here. As far as, there's also mentioned in the statement, in the article in the paper, that there would be water, toilet updates, et cetera, which is, which is fine. I personally feel if a large swimming pool was built close to the pond, it'd be most People could swim, people could still go out there, canoe, fish, whatever you wanna do, and we'd still have the pristine gem look of Sloper's Pond. That's the way I look at it. I think if the dredging, everything's done, it's gonna be a mess. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The microphone is still open, if anyone else would like to come forward and speak about the Neighborhood Assistance Grant for the YMCA Camp Sloper. Last call, anyone for the public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll enter into our regular meeting, so Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
William Dietzick, Tom Lombardi.
Here.
Don Mocelli.
Present.
Kelly Morrissey, Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Michael Ricchio.
I'm here.
Victoria Triano.
Here.
John Barry.
Christopher Paul Mary.
Here. And just for the record, John and Kelly both are traveling, so unfortunately couldn't make it back in time for tonight's meeting.
Yes, and Bill is at home, his wife is not, the only one today.
Okay. So they regret they can't be here, but we'll carry on. Prayer is Councilman Pulis.
Lord, may you continue to bless and keep Southington and her people. May you direct and lead this council in all her endeavors, as we seek to do what is right and just for all people. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Lombardi, would you mind leading us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we all received our minutes from the last meeting, so I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any of the discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Councilperson communications. Mr. Ricchio.
A couple things. I would like to start by saying that the drive-in theater this summer is in absolute full swing. We've had, first two weekends were complete sellouts. We have some new help down there, who's doing, they're doing a spectacular job, and I would encourage the citizens of Southington to come out and support the drive-in, as it does fund many of our civic organizations through their help with parking and running the operations down there. But if the first two weekends were any indication, it's gonna be a wild summer, and we had, last year, we had painted the screen, so, and we've upgraded our equipment, we've upgraded the lights, actually the projectors, and their ability to project an amazing image with the silver paint on the screen. So, those two combinations, it's really, on the Night of Jaws, the picture was spectacular. So, come on to the drive-in, and enjoy yourselves. And then the second thing was, my final follow-up today, on the barn on East Street, and it's essentially not gonna cost the town anything, it's like 1,200 bucks, I'm happy to pay that myself. It's 1,200 bucks to hook up the power for the electrician, CLMP runs the service for free. So that, the water department's happy to hook up the water, as long as it's a, the council's behind it. They did say they didn't want it to turn into a political football. If that didn't happen, they're happy to do it. So, you know, I wouldn't, we still have, I sent an email around, we still have the table item of the Farm Committee's recommendations for the 2.3 or 4 million, I can't remember the total amount, of expenditures. I'd like to see that acted upon, so that, I think things have to take place in order. That's currently under the purview of the council. I'd like to see it either added tonight or added at the next council meeting, so we can act on that, and then have a discussion with the council as to whether or not the council would like to see that barn saved through the efforts of a committee of local community members that are interested in preserving that, and hopefully, outside of potentially taking the money that the town would spend in demolishing the barn, maybe applying that to our renovation project, and then going out for grants, or fundraising, or what have you. I'm happy to spearhead that to save that barn. I did see the report from the town staff, as to far as the costs. I would debate that cost quite a bit, but it's not, nothing that scares me at all. It's not an obstacle, in my opinion. So, I think we need to act on that. I know you've asked me to go to the Farm Committee meeting, you know, the Farm Committee knew my intentions on wanting to save that barn prior to them recommending that we tear it down, so I don't see any point in me going to the Farm Committee. This decision falls on this council, and I think we need to take things in order and act on what we have on the table right now.
So it is back at the committee right now, and there won't be any action here until we have further action at the committee level. For example, I'm not necessarily opposed to water or electricity, but we have no plan for what to do with it once it's there. So, again, it goes back into that master plan, that's why we suggested you attend the Farm Heritage Committee meeting. The last one we couldn't have, we actually didn't even have a quorum, so that's why we had to cancel that meeting. But, I want to state again that the plan was not to do anything with that barn until we completed other phases of the master plan, which includes building another barn on the other site. So if that doesn't happen, then that barn would not, we wouldn't be doing anything with that barn. So there would be no demolition until that happens. And furthermore, it was also stated that we're not opposed to potentially keeping both, but it needs to be part of the master plan, and that's where we're at with the committee.
So are we redoing the master plan, or are we acting on the master plan that's in front of us?
No, no. Right now, I think it would have to be redone before bringing it to the council. So, we did not take action on that, and I don't really have any intention of bringing it back here until the Farm Heritage Committee has a thorough discussion about next steps.
So, I mean, aren't we kind of wasting our time? If the council were to want to give a nod towards saving the barn, shouldn't we have that discussion prior to sending this back to the Farm Heritage Committee, have them spin all their wheels, come back to us with another proposal, spend money on an engineer?
No, because the plan is to save the barn until we approve a master plan. If there's, if there's no plan approved, then the barn isn't going anywhere, so essentially the barn is saved.
Saving the barn and doing nothing to the barn are two different things, because doing nothing to the barn lends itself to the barn just falling down, which then just...
Which is why we need a whole plan, not just adding water and electricity. So again, Mr. Ricchio, I will encourage you, come to a Farm Heritage Committee meeting, we can have that discussion there, it's an appropriate discussion at a committee level rather than here. That's why we didn't take action on it, and we don't, I don't plan on putting it back on the agenda.
I don't plan on coming to the Farm Heritage Committee, because my intent is very simple, save the barn. If they want, if the council wants to save the barn, and they can find a use for it, I think the uses are pretty simple, then they would make that recommendation. But I'm not gonna go to the Farm Heritage Committee and tell them to save the barn. I've said that 100 times, they know my intent.
Okay.
I'm happy to spearhead it, I'm happy to put money into it. What else do you want, what do you want me to go to the Farm Heritage Committee and say?
A plan for what to do once the barn is saved.
I've said that on the record too. I think the barn should be put out for bid for a local farmer to utilize the facility. That was my intent from the day I voted on saving that barn.
Then you can come to the committee, we can talk about it in front of the committee, and make a recommendation to the council.
Committee knows my intent, you can let them know my intent.
Okay, well...
I'm not planning on going to the Farm Heritage Committee.
That's fine, then it won't be at the council level until the Farm Heritage Committee makes a recommendation. Are there any other councilperson communications? Mr. Lombardi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few more Board of Ed comments this evening. First of all, congratulations to the class of 2019, graduation is Thursday night. I also want to point out a really stellar spring athletic season this year. The volleyball team had a great year, I'm not sure if they're done, or if their state tournament is done. Baseball was the Class Double L runner-up this past weekend, and softball was again the Class Double L champion, so a really fantastic year for the athletic program at the high school.
Just to tag onto that before you get away, I've reached out to the athletic director as we have done in the past, so hopefully we'll have the softball team here and do a formal presentation for winning that state championship, so...
Excellent. And also I want to just recognize Brian Sternary, the principal at the high school who's retiring this year. Many of us know Brian, and he has been an incredible educator over the last 30 years, so I want to congratulate Brian Sternary, and I hope that the community will thank him and appreciate all that he's done for the students of this town, so...
And just to add on to that too, and Jeff Shaw, who's an administrator up there, is also retiring this year, so...
My goodness.
He's an assistant principal there, so he's retiring as well.
He's done a fantastic job as an administrator and with the band.
Absolutely.
I still can't get over that Brian Sternary had my husband, who was my age, obviously, as his tech ed teacher and his assistant football coach. Wow.
So, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other councilperson communications? Vice Chair Mocelli?
Okay, so, we have our annual Town slash Chamber walkthroughs coming up. This Friday, June 14th, is our Downtown Southington walkthrough, we'll meet in front of Town Hall at 10 o'clock, and then the following week, Wednesday, June 19th, we'll walk the Village of Planksville area, we meet at the gazebo at 10 o'clock on the Planksville Green. And both of these walkthroughs occur annually, they allow us to discuss different economic development initiatives, look at the infrastructure, look at any challenges, talk to our business owners, talk to residents in the area, speak to improvements, you know, just really put a face on both of those areas and be able to see what we need to do, and to also just give kudos to those two prime locations in our community. So please, all of you, I encourage you to join us on these annual Town walkthroughs. That's it.
Great. Mr. Lombardi.
Thank you. Can I just make a comment to Vice Chair Mocelli on that? I will not be able to attend that, but I do have an item that I would like the council to look at, and that is the crosswalks in downtown Southington. I know last year, the year before, we allocated money for the pavement repairs.
Yes.
So as you do that walkthrough, I'm sure the town managers are already aware, but I think it would be a good area to take a look at. I noticed it when we had our Memorial Day Parade.
Right, those are, those are not done. Those continue to be worked on this summer.
The Public Works Director is getting prices for, there's several ways you can do it. We've gotten the first price, and it's a, it's a large ticket item, I'm not gonna get into it tonight, but I'll be looking at all the ways it can be done, and giving some recommendations eventually to the Public Works Committee, but there's no funding in place currently for it.
Perfect. So I think that answer will be, will be valid when the, when people raise that issue when they're walking that day.
Mr. Ricchio?
Yeah, in relation to that, Mark, it looks as though we've changed the color of the light posts and the garbage cans. Is that, who made that decision? Is that, they're not, they're forest green now, they're not the green that they were before, so...
I will have to double-check, I was not aware of that.
In downtown Southington?
Totally different color, and the gold is a different gold, so I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing is consistent, and we don't have the top of Center Street one color.
That's a good point, I just, I wasn't aware of the shade difference.
Totally different. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I...
Yes.
I just wanted to publicly thank Mrs. Sarafino's class, fourth grade class, and also to thank the town staff. We did the Triano Town Hall tour last Thursday, and, and Mrs. Larkin was wonderful with the kids and gave them maps of Southington, and then we had Assistant Chief DeBattista talking about the role of the firefighter, and then we had Patrolman Jim Valentine come and give back a bag of goodies to all the kids. As they were leaving, they said to me, "This was better than our field trip yesterday." We went to the Science Center, so there was big competition going on, but just thank, the town manager stopped and talked with them, and, and so I just wanted to thank everybody who helped, it really made an impression on the...
That's nice.
Better than the Science.
Mr. Pulis?
Sure. Two items. Historical Society update, the South End Schoolhouse is gonna be open now from June through September. Dates and times will be posted on the Historical Society website, it's based on volunteers that are available. Thursday nights, 5 to 8, the main building is open to visitors. They've held their annual meeting and voted for their Board of Directors. The plan and the work under, in the lower level is still underway. Their primary fundraiser will be coming in September, it's a, it's a tag sale, you might have seen it if you've driven by in the past, where the money that they raised from that tag sale funds their programming and renovations for that building. Second item I wanted to share was just to give a shout-out to a teacher from Flanders School, Kim Padraff. Kim Padraff, this past week, received information, received the announcement that she was awarded a Lincoln Center Fellowship. What this is, is it's a learning fellowship for which 80 teachers in the state of Connecticut are selected. She will go and work with educators from around the world at the Lincoln Center and learn about art integration, and then for six days, six, seven days this summer, it's very prestigious, it's funded by our friends from the Dalio Foundation. And she took the initiative to apply, so she could grow professionally, and then bring that learning back to share with her colleagues. You might recall from the April, an April meeting, when we honored some people in the audience who had received Fund for Teachers grants to study around the world. Kim was in that group as well, along with six other teachers. And I just wanted to publicly shout out and applaud, again, her innovative approach to finding ways in tough times to continue to grow professionally. Where Southington is really lucky to have teachers who work hard to be better, and to share what they learn, not just with their fellow colleagues, but with their students. So, shout-out to Kim Padraff.
Okay. Any other councilperson communication? I just have one. Councilwoman Triano and I had the pleasure of attending opening ceremonies for the Relay for Life last Friday, so, two Fridays ago, sorry, not last Friday, and I'd just like to thank the community for their constant support of such a worthwhile event. It's a never-ending battle, and we appreciate all the residents that come out or financially support the event, and a special thanks to all the organizers, and especially Joyce McAlune for all her work putting, putting together that annual event. So, thank you to all. All right, so with that, we have a couple presentations this evening, so the first one is Emotional Intelligence Presentation. This is something going on in our school system that we wanted to share with the community at large, so we have Sue Viccavage and Meg Walsh from the Board of Education here to share the Emotional Intelligence Presentation with us.
Give us a second. Mr. Short, are you gonna help us with the technology?
Um, okay, okay. Just, if you give us the icon...
The password is demo2. Shh, demo2.
I don't know how you do that, we pay everything as a team.
You want to do your presentation, then tackle the other one.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. So... So, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council. My name is Meg Walsh, I'm the Director of People Personnel Services for Southern and Public Schools, and with me is my colleague...
I'm Sue Viccavage, I'm the Assistant Principal at Kennedy Middle School.
First of all, I would like to thank you for having us here tonight to discuss emotional intelligence. As you all know, mental health issues are very concerning, it's not just a Southington or Connecticut problem, it's a national problem. We have younger students, younger and younger, dealing with significant emotional issues, trauma. We have students who have not learned appropriate coping skills to deal with stressors. Life is very fast-paced, the internet contributes, sometimes students getting overwhelmed with information, the different family structures now impact our students, and we're so focused often on the curriculum and the standards and all that, we move through things, and children are very sensitive and they're very different, and we have them, you know, six and a half hours a day during their lifetime of school, from ages three to 21, for our students with special education needs, and it's very important that we honor their emotions and teach them and bring them forward in understanding relationships, respect, empathy, and those kinds of things. So, we have a presentation we're gonna share with you tonight about our current mission with emotional intelligence. It was an endeavor that was started about four years ago, we sent some trainers. Emotional intelligence has been around for a long time, but the Emotional Intelligence Center is out of Yale New Haven, and Dr. Mark Brackett is the person who brought this program to life, and it's in schools nationally and also internationally, and it's not a kit, and it's not lessons, it really is like a way of life, it's a climate, it's an attitude about emotions and respecting others and understanding what the emotions are. Currently in Southington, we started off with two elementary schools, Strong and Planksville, they were like the spearhead schools for the implementation, and then we had two middle schools, Kennedy and DePaulo. Since then, the other elementary principals wanted to get on board, and then we had some high school people express some interest. So currently, it's implemented in all eight elementary schools, the two middle schools, and the high school, and it's at various degrees of implementation. Also will be implemented at Alta as well, that's gonna be happening next year. Last month, we sent on parents, because the training is the adults in the school, they understand their emotions and what it's all about, and then the training goes to the students, and then the families... And then the training goes to the students, and then the families, and then it goes out to the community. So this is part of our community presentation as we move forward. And last month, we did send out eight parents from Strong and eight parents from Plansville, and they went to a parent training down at Yale, and they will become the presenters and provide the parent training. We had three members of our staff. They became fellows for the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. Steve Bergen from Plansville, Melissa Barbuto from Strong, and Cara Sevel, who is a lit specialist at Kennedy. We have a district-wide committee, and we meet monthly, and we developed a roadmap to take us out five years, and we've projected that even further because we really believe in this effort and this commitment to the students and families and Southington community as a whole. Already, I've presented at the STEPS Executive Committee. I've met with the Youth Services Bureau and presented to them. And throughout this summer and next year, we'll continue to bring it to all different agencies and community organizations, civic organizations, to have, to bring an awareness and hopefully have Southington community embrace it so that we become an emotionally intelligent community. So here's the... Thank you to Rick Campbell for helping us with this video. He's very talented, and this is our tool. It's an instructional video, if you will, and it kind of speaks...
Hello, I'm Steve Bergen, Principal, Plansville Elementary School in Southington.
And I'm Melissa Barbuto, Principal of Strong Elementary School.
Today, we will share with you our journey of emotional intelligence within the Southington Public Schools.
Emotional intelligence is about what we do with our emotions. The more skilled we are at managing our emotions, the better outcomes there are. In this video, we will go over the key components of emotional intelligence. We will also hear from students and staff from within the district on the impact emotional intelligence has had on them and the transformation within their classrooms.
The acronym Ruler describes the five key skills of emotional intelligence. Ruler stands for recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing, and regulating emotions. Now let's hear from our staff and students on how Ruler skills have impacted them and why emotions matter.
The greatest impact that Ruler has had on me and my students by far is just our level of awareness. Our students are incredibly aware of who they are, how they feel, what they think, and it's led to them being more compassionate individuals and more excited about their learning.
I feel like it really brings my classroom community together, and it's a way that our whole school can kind of bond over the same things.
I think emotions matter because if we didn't have emotions, I think we would just be moping around all day.
Yeah, and like you can't feel happy, and like if you get something cool for Christmas, you can't like feel happy, you just won't like feel anything.
I really just think emotions make who we are and what we're made of.
They help you get through the day, and when you're feeling sad, you can try to get better and get happier. And if you're not sad, then that can affect other people too. Like you get mad at someone, then they can get hurt, and it can be a chain of events.
If you have a bad mood starting off the day, then you're going to have an entire bad learning experience, a bad sports experience if you're on a sports team, or just overall a terrible mood.
The best part about using Ruler at Kennedy is the students' ability to really analyze how they're feeling, plot how they're feeling, and actually discuss strategies on getting out of one quadrant into another. It really has made a positive impact in my work as an administrator with students, being able to talk about our feelings, plot them, and talk about where we need to go to have a better day.
We can communicate much more effectively. We're able to identify emotional cues as we listen, and then we can respond in a much more positive and appropriate manner.
Emotions are important because they allow other people to understand us and how we are feeling, and others to understand them and how they're feeling.
Say you're in the yellow, that's happy. Like happy can help you stay calm, and also green can help you stay calm. Like if you're in the red or the blue, those are not going to help you. They're just going to make you feel like you can't do it, or you're just going to be like, "I'm so mad."
It also prepares them, not just in English class, but really across all the disciplines, and it's a life skill that they can take with them and use as they embark on their journeys as 21st century citizens.
To me, emotions matter because if we don't learn how to control our emotions, then how are we going to control ourselves? Our emotions can take control of us so easily.
It's a pretty well-known fact that across educational circles, kids can't learn well when all they can think about is how they feel. By using Ruler and helping kids to recognize and regulate their emotions to find their better selves, they can learn more efficiently.
The Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence has designed various tools to help build and practice the Ruler skills. The four anchor tools of emotional intelligence are the Charter, the Mood Meter, the Meta-Moment, and the Blueprint. The first anchor tool is the Charter. The Charter allows everyone in a school community the chance to articulate how they want to feel at school, then work together to agree upon behaviors that support those feelings. As a group, the school community members decide on what needs to happen or change for those feelings to be consistently present. Creating a charter helps all stakeholders in a school to build and maintain a positive emotional climate.
The reason why we did a charter is because we want to feel safe, calm, loved, supportive, confident, involved, and happy.
We use our charter a lot during the day, and myself and my students do. Definitely use it during our morning meetings on Mondays and Tuesdays. We refer to our class charter. We talk about all of the feeling words that we have. We look at the actions that we wanted to take in order to feel that way. We reassure ourselves that we actually are feeling that way. We talk about what could we do to make sure we're more focused, that we're more energized, that we're all feeling welcomed with each other, and then we actually revise as we go each week.
We all, as a class, we decided on what the different words should be, and we had at least like 10, and we got them down to six.
I think it helps building the community, but if you're looking for your friend on Mood Meter, and you want to help them get out of that emotion, you go over to it and you look for them, and then you find them, and you see what can make them get out of the bluer red to the greener yellow.
So I think the biggest impact that the Mood Meter has had on our classroom is building classroom community because the students are really noticing where their classmates are on the Mood Meter. So if a student is in the red or in the blue, I often will see classmates going over to each other and either giving them a hug or trying to cheer them up or just paying a little extra special attention to them that day. So it's really nice to see them building that classroom community with each other.
The second anchor tool is the Mood Meter. The Mood Meter helps us to build emotional intelligence with daily use of our Ruler skills. We can use the Mood Meter to plot how we're feeling in a given moment. In this way, this tool helps us to build self-awareness. With daily use, the Mood Meter can help us to build the five Ruler skills. The Mood Meter helps us to recognize and label our emotions at any given moment. We can plot our emotions by asking ourselves how pleasant we're feeling while considering our energy level. This tool consists of two axes. The horizontal X-axis measures pleasantness, from minus five, the most unpleasant you've ever felt, to plus five, the most pleasant you've ever felt. The vertical Y-axis measures energy, from minus five, extremely low energy, to plus five, the most energetic you've ever felt. We can keep the Mood Meter in mind as a tool to help us understand each of the Ruler skills.
The Mood Meter helps you understand your emotions throughout the day because you are able to understand if you're feeling good or feeling bad, and if you're able to change those emotions to benefit others in your community.
As a teacher, I really do enjoy the Mood Meter. It gives me that time to kind of sit and process where I am emotionally so that I can set myself up for a great day.
It's given us a chance to kind of take a step back and respond to each other rather than react. It's made us a lot closer because we're talking about our feelings more and understanding each other.
If you're feeling angry, you'll know how to put yourself, like how to try to get yourself into a good mood, so you can tell in the different times of the day what mood you're in.
The Mood Meter has helped me recognize and understand my emotions because if I'm mad or if I'm sad, I don't really know how I'm feeling. I can look at the Mood Meter and kind of assess myself.
It really gives me time to kind of reflect on myself and reflect on my day because, you know, throughout our busy days, we don't really always get time to really think about ourselves and how we're feeling.
The Mood Meter has helped me recognize and understand my emotions because I'm able to see how I'm feeling and where I would like to be on the Mood Meter, and I'm able to take the time to do some self-care techniques, whether it's talking to a colleague, taking some deep breaths, or whatever I need to do to feel better so I could be more present with my students and be a better social worker.
It's helped me to realize my gamut of emotions that I have and that it's okay to have those emotions. And secondly, it's helped me to realize that, you know, those emotions affect the way that I communicate with others.
The Mood Meter helps persons know like how you're feeling so they can, so a person can help a friend.
The third Ruler anchor tool is the Meta-Moment, which is the process for responding to emotional situations in ways that align with one's best self. The goal is to shift from automatic unhelpful reactions to strategic helpful responses. The Meta-Moment consists of four steps. Number one, sense that something has happened or changed in your environment. Two, pause to de-escalate and avoid responding in an unhelpful manner. Three, see your best self or visualize a positive image of yourself. And four, strategize and act in a more helpful manner.
To me, the Meta-Moment is the most important anchor tool within Ruler approach. The Meta-Moment is instrumental when I'm feeling strong emotions on a daily basis. It just gives me that time to take a moment, take a deep breath, regroup, and make better decisions about how I react to a situation.
When I've had strong emotions in my daily life, the Meta-Moment has been very helpful. Taking a moment to pause and reflect on my feelings gives me the opportunity to make better decisions. The fourth anchor tool is the Blueprint. The Blueprint creates pathways for reflecting on and resolving conflicts. Through answering questions about the conflict, we learn to empathize and consider the situation through the other person's perspective. Emotional intelligence skills have proven to be essential in all academic settings, for both students and teachers. When members of a school build their emotional intelligence skills, they contribute to a positive school climate for everyone in the community. The Ruler approach guides the learning and practicing of these skills, beginning with the educators and expanding to students, staff, and families.
Ruler is designed for everyone in a school community, including students, teachers, staff members, and families. Together, team members develop their own emotional intelligence and build positive emotional climates.
Mr. Chairman, we need both the Mood Meter and the Meta-Moment right here.
Yes.
That's what I wrote down.
Put it up right over here.
Yes.
Matter of fact, we have some on order, and we'd be happy to provide one for the Town Council.
Right in the back wall.
I just wanted to, before we take, if there are any questions, I just wanted to say that in terms of curriculum, when you look at young children to older children, oftentimes they get feelings mixed up, so bad, sad, mad, or common feelings. And so we're teaching vocabulary, frustrated, overwhelmed. Instead of saying, "I can't do this, I give up," well, why, you know, why can't you do this? And help them work it through. In addition, it connects very nicely to curriculum because if you're going to have a debate, you want students to be in the red because red doesn't necessarily mean angry and negative, but you want them to be passionate about what they're discussing. If you're introducing a new lesson and it's right after recess and the kid's in the yellow, you want to bring them down a little bit to the green if it's a more complex kind of concept you're teaching them. And also, in the school library and the classroom, where they each have classroom libraries, we could put little red stickers on, colored stickers on books to reflect what mood. So Harry had a horrible hair day or something, there's a book like that, "A Terrible Awful Day." And so that might be where we would put, you know, a blue sticker, a blue circle, so the students know how it relates back to the Mood Meter. So it is related to curriculum, and it is scientifically research-based, and many districts have, you know, been involved with it, and the results are, you know, are pretty outstanding in terms of, and it just makes sense. If people are in a better mood and feeling good about themselves, you're going to have more students engage in learning, you're going to have adults be happier, you know, because it's a stressful, work is stressful, life is stressful. So all of us need to be able to take step backs and know how we're feeling and how that impacts others. So does anybody have any questions?
Oh, I just have a comment. Yeah, just a quick comment. So, most of you know I'm a high school teacher in Reading, and I've had the privilege and honor to work with Dr. Brackett for the last several years in my work. The honor to present alongside Steve Bergen and Melissa Barbuto at multiple implementation conferences. They do the elementary side. I teach high school and like do the high school side with my principal. But I think most importantly, I just want to like give like a testimonial. I do this in my classroom. So I have, I teach Spanish, I have a Spanish Mood Meter, believe it or not. And as students become familiar with being able to identify, understand their own, how they're feeling, and also to have an awareness when they look across the room and they see and they can label how someone else is feeling, they become much more aware, or we would say emotionally intelligent, of emotions, and they make better decisions. Behavior in my class, like discipline has significantly reduced because of this because kids are more empathetic and kind in class, because they know what it feels like to have a bad day, and then now they're identifying when someone else has a bad day. Instead of being, you know, needling, they're saying, "Hey, how can I help you?" And so, lower incidence of discipline, which creates more positive learning culture in the classroom. So as a teacher, I'm able to do more with my students because I have this positive learning environment, my classroom. I would say like across high school classrooms in my school, in many districts across Connecticut, this is a sentiment that is shared by most people who have put time and energy into teaching their students and themselves about emotional intelligence. The bottom line is this, and I will restate this just because I think it's important that the public understand. A lot of people think it's like a touchy-feely thing, emotions. This is the counseling staff's role, and it's not. If students can understand and regulate their emotions, they're going to learn more effectively. If teachers understand and can regulate their emotions, they're going to teach more effectively. And if everybody's more emotionally intelligent, that means they're aware of what's going on, you're going to have happier students, and you're going to have a more productive learning environment, and kids are going to learn more. I'm just excited because I have two kids in this school, in the school district, a second grader and a sixth grader. We have a Mood Meter in our house that they made in school and brought home and explained to me. I don't tell them, like, "Oh yeah," you know. I know what that is already, but my son will say, "Dad," you know, like, we could be in the, he's a second grader, eight years old. He comes home and says to me, "Dad, you know, we can't escape being in the red or the blue, and it's not a bad thing. We just got to know what to do when we're in those quadrants and how to get ourselves to a place that's more pleasant." So, kudos to the team. I support you wholeheartedly. I'm looking forward to meeting with Mr. Medansi this summer to talk about funding sources. I hope maybe you can join that conversation. I have some ideas. And one last thing, I read in The Observer or Citizen this past week that through the Main Street Foundation or the Southington Education Foundation has received nearly $35,000 in grant money to fund this work. Again, I'm going to sound like a broken record. This is the approach we have to have to funding initiatives in the financial climate that we currently exist in public education. We have to move away from this paradigm where you either raise taxes or cut programs. These people are finding a third way to do what's best for kids. So, congratulations, and I think this is just a great move for Southington Schools.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Triano?
Yes. Thank you. I learned an awful lot tonight. I do have a question about collection of data and measurable outcomes. In the research for all of this, has, have there been real measurable outcomes in the program? And have you seen, have you seen that transferred even into our local schools? So, I mean, it just can't be a feel-good program. There has to be measurable outcomes in order for us to say it's working or it's not working.
I just want to jump in, Councilwoman Triano. We gave these Ruler lessons to half of our ninth grade two years ago. We only had the...
Our ninth grade or to your ninth grade?
In my school, but I want to speak to data. We looked at first-quarter GPAs. So how, every kid in the ninth grade did it in the first quarter. We looked at those GPAs. We only had the capacity because we had few people trained to give the lessons to half the ninth grade. So we gave the lessons to half the ninth grade. We taught them about how to regulate and all the tools we learned about tonight. And then at the end of the third quarter, we looked at all of the ninth graders' GPAs again, and we found that nearly 10% more kids that received the lessons increased their GPA from the first to the third. GPA from the first to the third quarter. So, that's just one example of, like, an academic data point that supports the implementation of this work.
And I would like to hear some also from you, if you would, please.
Sure, so, it's, it's a research-based, scientifically research-based program that was developed at the, there's a lot of research behind it. So, the data points we're looking at are improved attendance for students, we're looking at improvement in grades, we're looking at surveys to look at teachers, their level of, help me out, we're-
The way they use it, the ease of being familiar with the EI.
And also satisfaction on that, on the job. Also, for students, there are surveys that we use already, some are from the state and some that we've developed. And also, our peer mediation program, we wanna see, so we have identified data points that we're gonna track over time. It's really in infancy right now, but we will have that information.
So, you've got that already in place?
Right.
And as Mr. Pulis has said, that, that it's been working in his experience, which is very good, too. So, the, the data points, do you generate them, or they come, do they come from the study?
Well, the district owns that, and so, that's what we've presented to the board, that's what typically Emotional Intelligence, the center, has used. But we also identified, for example, the peer mediation program at our middle schools, we wanna look to see those decrease because we want students to have less conflict, and if they're using Emotional Intelligence and the mood meter and the Metamoments, we should see less conflict between students. And also, when we wrote the grant, we had to identify the same data points that I just shared with you, because they are also looking for, it is not just a feel-good program, it's teaching a skill set, right, and how to regulate and how to deal with stressors, and to be more empathetic and more aware of people's behavior, including the adults, right? Because teachers, if you all think back, you know, to good experiences, but you also might've had an experience where a teacher may have said something to you, maybe it wasn't what they said, but how they said it, and some children are very sensitive. And so, and then some families have had that, had good experiences in school, so they bring that with them. So, really, if the whole community's engaged in it and is aware of it, you know, we're thinking of slopers and maybe at the public library having a mood meter, just for an awareness, not that they have to engage in the implementation, but that's what we're looking to do. And we are bringing in three speakers next year, one to talk about early childhood collaboration, and they're an expert in that area from the center, then somebody else to talk about diversity and cultural sensitivity, that will be the evening parent presentation, and then also, we have contracted with Dr. Brackett to come to our convocation in September, so.
I just wanted to mention, in terms of implementation and in terms of data, so, we've rolled this out at Kennedy, we're a year ahead of DePaulo. Chris is actually on the committee with Megan on it, Kara Siebel, our literacy specialist at Kennedy, Krista Stevel, the social worker at DePaulo, and then Steve and Melissa are all on the district committee. And so, we were ahead of DePaulo. So, we focused last year on training teachers. What are all the steps of EI, what do the quadrants mean? We provided a lot of PD. This year, our focus was on the students. At DePaulo, we're still with the teachers, next year is the full rollout with students. They, the students are aware of it, but they haven't had that full year of experience. So, now, what I do in terms of my own personal data is, Chris and I, as administrators, we have an evaluation system, and so, I actually am using and tracking EI's effect on discipline. So, because this year is the initial, if you will, full rollout for students at my school, I'm gathering baseline. So, then, my goals as an administrator will be developed to decrease what I might have as current levels of discipline based on how EI impacts that. So, over time, we definitely will be doing it. Thank you, Meg, thanks, appreciate it.
Mr. Ricchio.
Oh, just a quick question, do you, as part of the program, do you teach the kids that thought, change, change your thoughts can change your mood as well? Is that part of it?
Yes, so that's the Metamoment, seeing your best self, and it's also how to move from one quadrant to another, and it's also coping skills. So, when I get frustrated, you know, instead of banging my fist on the desk or saying, "I hate this," you know, there's other ways to express that. So, this is hard for me. And so, if everybody's using that common language, our hope is that, you know, we'll have students be healthier in terms of their, the mental stresses that they deal with, and develop appropriate coping skills, because many of them don't have that.
And I'm using that right now, so if there is a disciplinary infraction, I give them the blueprint, and they actually write what they did, how are they feeling, what could have led them to get out of that feeling, what could they have done differently, and then we process. So, I review all of them, and there's some that I will meet one-on-one with a student afterwards, but then always follow it up with the counselor or social worker.
And actually, a staff member came to me and shared that she used the blueprint, that's like the design that they use how to resolve conflicts, she used it with another staff person, because they didn't see eye to eye about something, and so, instead of, you know, doing this back-and-forth email or whatever was happening, used the blueprint tool, went and met with the other person face-to-face, and it was resolved, and they both walked away, because communication, you know, and emails and those kinds of things, sometimes we don't always, we might misread things or read into things. So, it's a tool that we all can learn from. I do a lot of sometimes difficult meetings, and so, I have to remember to do the Metamoment and my best self and breathe deeply, because sometimes, you know, um-
Oh, come on, you're, you're-
Calm all the time.
Always calm.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Ricchio.
The Metamoment.
Yeah, no.
Good friends.
This is cool stuff, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's very exciting, and I love the idea of putting into the, have a Spanish mood meter and all of our other foreign languages to teach those verbs and those, you know, feeling words.
vocab, colors, all kinds of stuff, yeah.
Excellent, but that's very exciting.
Any other questions from the council members? Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming and sharing this with us.
Thank you for having us and for rescheduling us a couple of times, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hashtag Metamoment.
That's right. Hashtag Metamoment.
This is a segue into a stressful time of year, the tax bills will be going out, so we have, we have Teresa Babins here from our revenue department.
So, next, we're continuing our monthly presentations from our various departments in town, and we specifically timed this presentation, again, as we do prepare for our residents to receive their tax bills, everything is set, as I mentioned at the last meeting, now that the Board of Finance has officially set the mill rate. That brings the work back to your office, so we appreciate you coming tonight and giving an overview for not only members of the council, but a lot of our residents, as not only are they here, but they're watching from home. So, without further ado.
Mark stole my joke, actually, I was gonna mention something about the red quadrant, but-
Oh, there you go.
He beat me to it. So, yes, it is tax time, we are gearing up to get our new tax bills out into the mail. We have, I'm just gonna give a really high-level overview of the tax process. So, there are three types of taxes, the first one is real estate, and that is all the land and all the improvements or structures that are on the land, there's residential, commercial, industrial, vacant land, and we have just about 18,000 taxable parcels in Southington. The second type is personal property, and that is actually, it's confusing, because it says personal property, but this is a category that's geared towards businesses, and it's the furniture fixtures, machinery, equipment, office supplies that go into running a business here in town. And there are over 2,200 of those accounts. And then, the motor vehicle category contains predominantly passenger vehicles, commercial, motorcycles, trailers, campers, there's 44 separate classification codes that the Department of Motor Vehicle uses, and we have over 43,000 taxable vehicles here in Southington. The grand list, as we know, is gonna reflect ownership as of October 1st of 2018, it's gonna reflect all taxable property here in town as of that date. The new grand list was signed by the end of January this year, I think I was a couple days ahead of time. We're getting ready now to send the bill files to the printer, I worked all day today to do that, and they will probably be sent tomorrow. The printer's gonna work with them, get the format down, and then, they will be mailed from the printer on June 28th. So, the due dates for the taxes are July 1st and January 1st for real estate and personal property, if your tax amounts are over $100. Motor vehicle taxes are only due in one installment in July, unless you appear on the supplemental list, and that would mean you'd get a tax bill that comes due the following January 1st. The best way to pay, honestly, is just to stick it in the mail. It's quick, it's easy, and it saves you a lot of time waiting in lines. July is a really busy time, there are still a lot of people that feel the need to come into Town Hall to pay their taxes, and we just wanna encourage people to mail it in. We do use a lockbox facility, we use Peoples United, and all of the tax payments that are mailed in get processed by that service, and then, that amount collected is deposited into the bank the same night. So, it's a real quick way to get the money in and available for town use, and it just saves people a lot of time.
Can you go back, can you go back one slide before you move on?
Yeah, I think, here we go, this one?
So, if you could just talk to, so, the real estate tax bill, so for obvious reasons, we don't mail out July 1st and then a January 1st, but residents ask all the time, should they forget to pay it, because they receive it in January, you know, they receive it in July-
Right.
-to pay their, can you just talk a little bit to that?
Sure, so, the bills that we print are printed as of the ownership from October 1st, and whoever, but whoever owns the property as of July 1st is the one that is responsible to make the payment for that tax installment, since that tax payment covers you from July 1st through December 31st. There are too many moving parts to keep up with, just one reason, too many moving parts to keep up with changes in ownership. The market is, is off-the-chain crazy with transfers, and it, it happens way too quickly for us to be able to then pick another point in time to then send out new bills for the January installment, not to mention the fact that it costs money to print the bills. So, the bill that we send in July has three different coupons to it, the first one you tear off, you would send in with your July installment, the remaining two are a receipt that you can keep for your records, and then, the January coupon that you can send in with your second payment, and we recommend to people, the people that have to pay taxes, a lot of times, the mortgage companies will pay if you have money in escrow. More than half of our residential parcels are escrowed, so, the taxpayer never sees a real estate bill, it comes directly out of their escrow account. But for the people that are responsible to pay the real estate taxes, especially the ones that have had a mortgage in the past and just recently paid it off, and now they're responsible for the first time to pay it themselves, we would suggest, if, I mean, I do, I don't know if everybody does, but I'm sure that people have calendars in their homes, whether it's a desk calendar or a calendar that hangs on the wall, just to clip it onto December, so that when you flip that page to the last page of that year, you're reminded that you have a tax payment coming up. And there's gonna be, I'm gonna try to get the marquee at the fire department also to reference taxes are coming due this coming July as well as January. The chief doesn't know it yet, but I do plan on talking to him about that, because I see really good reminders for other town-
Right.
-occurrences, and I think this is, would be a really good one to make sure that everybody that drives on that strip is aware.
You can also use the marquee in Dernowski and the town clerk through, through her office, you know, put it out on the news feed, right, on the homepage-
Yep.
-of the town website.
Absolutely.
Those are great ways to get that message out.
Yes.
Great.
That's, that was good, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I hit, oh, you're, okay. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Can you go back to the slide that the chairman just referenced? So, just for the public's knowledge, you're mailing out the bills on June 28th and they're due on July 1st.
Yes.
Can you just talk about those dates a little bit more?
Absolutely.
Because people might look at that and get a little-
Yes, people get their bill on the 30th and they, they, you know, freak out, and they say, "You only gave me a day to pay." The due date is July 1st, but there is a 30-day grace period, so, August 1st would be the last day to pay that bill or to get it US Postal postmarked by that date in order to consider it a timely payment.
Just a quick, oh, quick question, so you said the best way is to mail it in?
Yes.
If people use online, like, a bank bill pay, they can put in the address of the Town Hall that's the same as writing a check and putting a stamp on an envelope-
Right.
-from your end?
It is the same, however, the process at your individual bank is, is much different than what happens at the post office, especially if you go to the counter at the post office and you have them hand stamp the postmark, that's the best way to, if you're gonna be one of those, and there are many, that wait until the last day or two to send that payment in, we recommend you go to the counter at the post office and have them hand cancel with the date, so that even if we receive that payment three weeks later, as long as it bears that postmark from the post office, it would be considered on time.
Okay.
The, the banks, if you go on my accounts at TD Bank, so if I go on to TD Bank on my online accounts and I set us up as a payer, a payee, and I want to pay my tax bill that way, if I wait until the last day, we're not gonna receive it on time. And to make matters worse, the bill pay payments that come, come in an envelope, sometimes there's one payment in an envelope, sometimes there's payments for 10, 15 different people, and those envelopes do not bear a US postmark at all. So, even if you get your check dated for July 31st or August 1st, if it doesn't bear a US Postal postmark and we receive it on August 3rd, that is technically considered a late payment. So, if you're gonna use a bill pay feature at your bank, we would recommend that you give it at least eight to 10 days and make that, schedule that payment ahead of time so that it gets there.
Thank, that's useful information, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Just one more thing to make it matters, could be more difficult, is that if you pay it on August 3rd, you don't pay two days' worth of interest, you pay all the way back to July 1st. So, remember that. So, late payment, the payment's due, let's say, August 1st, you pay on August 3rd, it isn't two days.
Right.
It's 33 days, so that's where you gotta remember that, too.
And if you're paying a real estate bill, those amounts, 3%.
We get, you know, in all honesty, we get that in our office quite often, and I know Teresa gets the same one, and they ask us, "Why is it?" If you look, if you look at your tax bill, it'll say specifically, if you don't make the payment by that date, it reverts back to July 1st.
And the minimum payment for interest is $2, which only applies in a motor vehicle scenario, if you have a $9 trailer bill and you pay that late, 3% of $9 isn't nearly enough, so they round it so that the minimum payment is $2. If you have a real estate bill and you're paying a $2,000 installment, 3% on that is quite hefty, so. There are other payment methods. We just talked about the bill pay, and as I mentioned, watch the payment dates, try to schedule those payments ahead of time so that those payments get to us on time. We do accept credit cards in the office, and we would recommend that you just pay from home. There's no sense in you coming down to Town Hall if you're gonna use a credit card, if you can just do it from the comfort of your own home in your jammies and slippers, the convenience fee you pay is the same whether you do it from home or in the office, so, if you are able, we would suggest you just do it from home. E-checks are also available through the website, if you go to southington.org and you find the Tax Office homepage, there is a link right there that will take you to make online payments. If you wanna use Visa, MasterCard, or Discover, it's a 2.45% convenience fee, the town does not mandate that or collect it, that goes to the credit card processor. If you pay with an e-check, which is the same thing as paying from your checking account, it's just not with a personal check, it goes through this service, and there's a $1.50 fee for that. And of course, if you really wanna see us, you can come in and you can pay with cash or checks or credit cards right in the office, so, we'd be happy to help you. We are going to be open every Thursday night until 7 o'clock, starting July 1st, or, you know, the following Thursday, we'll be open every Thursday going forward, so, 4:30 to 7 is a nice quiet time. So, that's basically an overview, it was really quick, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help answer you.
Vice Chairman Sully?
So, we just received a rescue-a-buck email, I think it was last week, and it actually questioned us about out-of-state vehicles, and does our town have a policy or procedure in place for people who live in town but are registering their vehicles elsewhere?
Right.
What is, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, there's a lot of that going on, there's a lot of Florida plates, there's a lot of Maine plates, New York, and in that email, I did see a copy of that email, and it did reference that other towns do have a procedure in place, and I would, I'd be interested to know which towns those are so that I can call them. Currently, the town of Southington does not have a policy in place. The only way that we can assign value to a vehicle in order to tax it is by the VIN. If we wanna assign an accurate value, we look up in the NADA books, we go online, and we put in that VIN, and it's a very specific value that comes up dependent upon the number- we put in that VIN, and it's a very specific value that comes up, dependent upon the numbers and the letters that are in that string of characters. So, you know, if somebody sends, and we've gotten letters, that's, you know, my neighbor has a Ford Mustang, and it's, we don't know the year, we don't know if it's got AC, we don't, you know, there's all kinds of things that would go into assigning a value, because that's what we want to do, is value correctly and accurately. So, I mean, we could just slap a number on there, but that wouldn't really make anybody happy. So in order to do it correctly, we would need a little more data.
Right.
And at this time, we just don't have a way to wrangle that all together.
So perhaps moving forward, we can reach out to CCM and find out, because they'll have, they may have that, a database with what other towns are doing. I would just be curious myself to know, what's this procedure that allegedly other towns do?
Yeah. If we come up, you know, if, if we get some information, I'd be happy to, you know, put it into.
The quickest way would be your organization.
Probably.
Because the assessors' organization would know immediately what towns do it.
Yeah.
That'd be the quickest way to do it.
Yeah. So as we move along, in, in the years that I'm here, I want to, I'm working on making our procedures more efficient, and in the hopes that we can then develop new processes and policies and procedures to, to tackle issues like this one, for instance.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the presentation? Any other questions?
Sure.
I don't wanna pay my tax bill, I'll just say that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I don't own your home either, so.
As, as a side note, I just wanna encourage residents, Vice Chairman Selly just mentioned the Rescue a Buck that we just received. So there is a way for residents to reach out to the council anonymously, and a lot of times, those are valuable suggestions, and people just don't feel comfortable sharing them personally. So please feel free to use, use that tool if there's something that you feel would be beneficial in the operations of the town, and send that, it comes directly to all nine of us, and, and then we can certainly follow with the appropriate department head. So just a little shout out for the Rescue a Buck. Okay. So moving on to our report of special committees, the first committee that met since our last meeting is Open Space, so Vice Chairman Selly.
Okay, so Open Space did meet, we were finally able to go over all of the details requested for the Curtis Open Space parcel, and we did approve all of the requests from the Curtis family. And I just wanted to make sure, I think I may have said tulips at the last meeting, and it's actually daffodils that will be planted out on that property eventually, not this year. So we can move forward with that tonight if everyone so chooses, because now both the SOAR committee and the Open Space committee have sort of given the requests from Tom Curtis their blessing. We have planned maintenance coming up on several of our Open Space parcels, you can find all of that in the minutes. And we continue working on the pollinator garden up at Novix, up at the Novix Open Space parcel, as funded by the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain grant last year. So that's exciting, because we had to wait through the fall and the winter, and these, this plantings have finally been done, and we are moving forward on that. So I can't wait for the ribbon cutting on that, which I'll have more news for once it's completed later this summer. That's it.
Great, any questions about Open Space, Councilman Lombardi?
I just have a comment for Vice Chairman Selly. The recent report that came out from the Board of Ed on the redistricting discussion that they're having.
I read that.
I would just, yeah, I would hope that maybe you could share that with your entire committee, because there were several references to Open Space and how it relates to the school system, so.
Definitely.
Just make sure that that gets passed along to the Open Space Committee.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on, Committee of Chairs, many of the topics that we already discussed tonight were discussed at the last Committee of Chairs meeting. First of all, we did proclivity to the budget process, again, having the conversation with the Board of Education, Board of Finance, and council, as well as planning and zoning. So we just wrapped up the budget process, which we talked a little bit about and saw in the presentation this evening. We talked about our upcoming public hearings and ultimate referendum for the municipal center. We also discussed a public hearing for the roads, which will be at our next meeting. The $900,000 were suggesting allocating for the roads, and the referendum to purchase this municipal center, which we saw the video at our last council meeting. We talked about the Town Diversity Committee, as well as the Board of Education, the work towards that, which Councilman Lombardi represents us on. So the superintendent just gave us an overview of that. And then finally, the last piece was what you just mentioned, the superintendent talked about the Malone and McBroom study for potential impacts to the school system with, with population changes. So I did attend the last Board of Education meeting, and that was, the presentation was very telling. So the report itself has a lot of information, but to hear, if you have, if you haven't already, you may wanna watch the video of the Board of Education presentation from Malone and McBroom, because it really gives a little bit more sense to, to the presentation that, that you saw.
Put it in context.
It does put it in context. So that's, that's a good video to watch for yourself if you're, if you wanna get a little bit more context. Nothing was decided at the, at that Board of Education meeting, because obviously that has impact on us as well. And that was it for Committee of the Chairs. So we're moving on to Town Manager's Report and Communications, and we have one item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, actually it's a big item, and I have to congratulate our, all our local reps. When we met, I think you were with me, Mr. Chairman, back in February, they were asked, they asked me one thing, what, what would I like to see for Southington? I gave them two things, I said, don't hurt us, give us a budget on time. And I gotta tell you, in both cases, of course, we, I'd sit here and say, I'd love to get more money, but we didn't get hurt, and I gotta congratulate them on the fact that we actually had a state budget on time. That's quite a feat, as, all those of you who've been on the council for many years, that's quite a feat. So briefly, we did receive a little bit more in ECS than I put in my budget, $16,270. And also, as you know, a lot of towns chose not to put the number in. I chose to put the number in for teacher retirement, so we have an off-budget item of $270,241. The state budget did not include town contributions to teachers' retirement, so those are two figures that the council and the Board of Finance could discuss later in the spring on how we wanna handle that money. I know that we talked about it briefly at the Committee of the Chairs, but that's something that we look at for reallocation back in the spring.
So just to get the council perspective, we did discuss this at the Committee of the Chairs, and we talked about, through the manager's recommendation, not doing anything until April 1st for either of those two items, just to see how the year's progressing. So it'll be, it'll be on our radar, and April 1st is that date that we agreed upon at the Committee of the Chairs meeting.
Well, the, the date obviously is a charter date. You can't move line items, out of the line items till after April 1st. My suggestion, I'll say it, I said, it's on the record, I said that we should probably look at in the spring, possibly putting that into road widening and other, other processes. So, but that's, of course, up to council and the Board of Finance based upon whatever recommendation that my office gives.
Mm-hmm.
But I would do nothing until after April 1st.
Okay. Any questions?
That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
For the manager? Okay, so moving on, Town Attorney's Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pretty quiet on the legal front tonight. Just to follow up on tax seasons, I don't wanna be left out of that conversation. We did receive, I think, four or five tax appeals, that's appeals of valuations of real estate in April and May, so I'll be working with Teresa Babbin on those going forward. We just received them, so we'll get, working on those now.
Great.
That's all I have tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for the Town Attorney? All right, so we are at Public Communications. The microphone is open for any member of the public that would like to speak. Again, I would like to remind the public, if you can start by stating your name and address for the record, and of course, ask you to limit your remarks to five minutes. The microphone is open.
Hi, my name's Elaine Sisson, S like in Sam, I Sess like in Sam, O N like in Nancy, and I'm at 82 Paul Heights in Southington. Kind of glad I came to this meeting tonight, because something I have wanted to talk about was agriculture and the Farm Heritage Committee. I was at an ice cream social that Yukon had in Hartford, always worth going because the dairy bar brings ice cream, and met the Hartford representative for 4H, and was told that there are 60 children on a waiting list at Bradley Mountain Goats to be in 4H. So if we're looking for something to do with a building and a farm, we certainly have the audience. There are children waiting to become involved in agriculture in this community. Also, if you're interested in agriculture and VOAG, our new Congresswoman, Johanna Hayes, is on both the Agriculture Committee in Washington and the Education Committee, and one of her goals is to increase VOAG funding in Connecticut. So if this is something that you're passionate about, I would recommend you get in touch with her office in Waterbury or in Washington. I heard you talk about the crosswalks. On Friday, I went to a presentation on complete streets and the Vision Zero Network in New Haven, and New Britain is implementing complete streets and have gotten many, many awards. They're right nearby. So if you're really interested in design, they can help you with that. Vision Zero, Zero Network is an organization that wants to have zero traffic fatalities, that's their goal. And there are a lot of really inexpensive, simple things you can do to make it safer for pedestrians with just bullards and paint. So you might wanna look into that as well, if that's something that you're interested in, and thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Any other residents that would like to come forward? Good evening, Mr. Fischello.
Good evening, Kewee One.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um. I had to, long ago, there was this gentleman, I spoke to past, you know, rest in peace, Lee Marcuselli, he died. I approached him as I approached so many, and I said, you know, this whole property. And he said to me, I'm not there yet. And then he went. I really never bother calling him, I just saw he called. Over the years, you know, every time you get the newspaper, it always says, police investigation, police investigation, wanna come to think? No. I investigated myself, of course, I'm nobody. You, for Lord, if God may be us. I'm beginning here to, a lawyer, David Currie, a gentleman, I spent a few hours with him back and forth, and he stood in the town council, and he said, what was done to Mr. Fischello? It was illegal, the town ought to be things to help him out. It was in 1998. Then he got, the council approached him somehow, and he got a letter in reverse. Who else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Grazie. To you too, you know? To you too, because underneath it's the letter, how to sue the property, the manager. Besides there, when the DiPaolo approached me a meal there, and I sent a letter of 14 page, he was the chairman. And he too, kept me by the leash. He, I do, eat the dog by the leash. That's why I'm to you. How lucky he won't say no, the fact, want my lost horse. I know I did to myself. I want nothing for nobody, just for mine.
Thank you.
Spend so many thousands of dollars, only think I learn how they lies.
Thank you.
The government.
Grazie.
You know, I'm not trying to, you're asking anything. Anything. It took 40 years of my life away, economically. Because of this nation by the immigrant, and the sons adore the immigrant, you think someday someone will really spoke up, one by one, put them down. If we people do not trust the Lord, if people not trust the government, they really need the supposed help him out, because of the tax, who they supposed go to? And the manager here, this one, which he was well informed, and he twisted everything around, but he's the manager, he's pure, what they working good? Are the people I can meet, listen now, Democrat, you know, undermine the democracy, listen now, even, my mama said one time.
Mr. Fischello, your time is up.
So Fischello, I wanna be an agenda, I wanna get paid, I wanna be the end, okay? Please.
Mr. Fischello, you have every right.
The counting off, all the, you know, sons, they need to come here, and you made a statement here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up, please.
I do, you said the facts, I got it here, you wanna see?
Mr. Fischello, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up, please.
You know this.
Thank you.
You run the middle of life, talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Fischello.
And the property, I wanna get paid, you're a thief, and you dishonest, and everything else.
Thank you, Mr. Fischello.
You take advantage of the little people, that's all it is, don't tell me about the You know, a sakalaski.
Mr. Fischello, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call a recess if you're gonna continue.
You might be good teacher, but you are not good government, let's put that way.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward to speak tonight before we close Public Communications?
I wanna be an agenda, let's know everyone. Put me in agenda.
Mr. Fischello.
Hey, what the heck?
Mr. Fischello.
Mr. Fischello, I'm big as heck.
Mr. Fischello.
I want Mr. Fischello, I wanna be an agenda.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
That's it.
Okay, we're gonna close Public Communications, so we're, we're moving, we're moving on with our meeting, please.
Motion to approve the action on the Neighborhood Assistance Grant.
Second.
You still little people I can meet.
Mr. Fischello.
Madam.
We're trying to carry on with our meeting.
You know, it's 40 years.
Mr. Fischello, we're trying to carry on with our meeting.
You, you, you don't even belong there.
Okay, I'm gonna call a two-minute recess, please.
You're not here, the land be back, keep them stupid, that's all it is.
...before us tonight? Okay, and I just wanna, again, state to the public, we have heard from Mr. Fischello for easily 20 years, council after council after council, we have taken the time, council members, town staff, town attorneys have taken the time and gone through and explained to Mr. Fischello everything that he's asking to us. So I just wanna make sure residents understand that we certainly are sensitive to what he's telling us, and we have addressed this over countless years. So with that being said, we'll move on with the agenda, and I think there was a motion, but if you don't mind, I'll ask you to make it again, Mr. Ricchio, so old, under old business, item A.
Yes, make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the 2019 Neighborhood Assistance Grant for the YMCA. And a second, is there any discussion?
I have a question, actually.
Sure.
Through you to the manager and Town Attorney. Based on the com, there's only one person that commented, but based on those comments, can we get, can we ask Mr. Poole to come back, or is that inappropriate?
Well, Mr. Poole can come back up, I believe, I don't recall whether he's already gone through planning and zoning and wetlands and all that kinda stuff, so Mr. Poole can come back up, that specific question.
When he, when he's coming up, I just wanna state that although, the YMCA could go for, if, if we voted no on this, the YMCA could go forward and, and pursue this on their own. This is not a town project, although it falls under the purview, I'm sure, of our planning and zoning and our inland wetlands and all that. and zoning and our inland wetlands and all that. And I know that it's gone through all the State Department of Environmental Protection, but correct me if I'm wrong, my question is, if you don't do this, that pond will die, essentially, and the fish and everything that are in there now will die, because there won't...it'll be too shallow.
That's correct. So again, we've had multiple studies done on the pond by limnologists, scientists who study ponds. DEEP has been out there, several other experts and engineers have been out there. And while I don't have an exact timeline as to how that would turn from pond to swamp to metal, we know that we've been told the time is right for us to act. I've been at the YMCA for 30 years, and there are parts of the pond that I used to be able to canoe in that I can no longer do, because there's so much silt and sediment. To answer some of the other questions that were brought about, we have local permitting through inland wetlands and planning and zoning. We have state permitting approval from DEEP, who was absolutely instrumental in the design of the plan. In fact, that underwater road in Birm for preventative maintenance was the credit to DEEP and their experts looking at the pond. And beyond that, we had to get approval from Army Corps of Engineers. So we've got local, we've got state, we've got federal approval. One thing that I do want to state is that with the revised plan, that kind of section in the middle, that will still be wet and pond-like for the majority of the project, because there's just no way to drain that section of the pond and get equipment in it. So some of the wildlife will have that habitat. Other wildlife will be able to crawl and slither into other wetland areas within the pond. The big concern is the fish. Sadly, DEEP has no regulation on the wildlife, and they say, "Let it go, and it'll come back." We don't feel that that's the right environmental or responsible act to move forward with, so we're going to do as many fishing derbies as possible to transplant, you know, fish and wildlife to locations that are applicable and appropriate. There will...there'll probably be some loss, but we've been assured by the experts and those who are, you know, strong in this field, that wildlife will come back and that we have some plans in place that will make it a better ecological system when we are done with the project. There's plans in the final phases of this to have underwater rock habitat and underwater trees, so that the fish habitat has places to lay eggs and live and do whatever fish do underwater.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions, discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Lombardi?
Yes.
Misselli?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on is action on the Curtis Open Space property.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept the plans that were presented today by the Vice Chairwoman and move ahead with the property as outlined this evening.
Great. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second? Okay.
I would just add, and also the presentation that was put place by the SOAR committee at your last meeting. We incorporate the whole thing together.
Yes, we incorporate that.
And I just want to thank the Curtis family for working with us. I know he came here, and as I stated that evening, it would come back to the council for a vote, so that's where we are tonight, after it went to the committees. So thank you to the Curtis family for working with all of us to make sure it was agreeable on all sides. So, Mr. Ricchio?
I have a comment, and it's Chris...I mean, Tom does. So a lot of people came around to make this a better situation, and so obviously, thank you to all the people, the committees and everybody that...but I hope that we learned from this, and that maybe there's a way through the Town Attorney's Office to review...that's already happening?
Actually, we've done it already. This particular property is the only one that we had with special conditions on it. The other ones, either we bought outright, which without state grant, and therefore they're...obviously, whatever the council or...and the respective subcommittees wish to do. The ones with the state grant have a specific caveat that's on all of those. So those are all out there. This one had some specific family requests that were put in it, so this was a little bit different, so obviously...
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lombardi, did you have comments?
Yeah, just for the record, I just...what we're voting on is the modification of restrictions found in the warranty deed agreement. And I know that, for the public's sake, they're not necessarily looking at these documents, but it is signed by William Curtis, but I don't...I didn't see a signature...
There's two separate ones. Your packet...your previous packet that was with the SOAR committee?
That had Thomas's...
That had both of them. Yeah, there's two separate distinct documents, because they weren't in the same location. So with your vote tonight, I'll be signing both documents and recording them on the land.
So it's just important for the public to know that the family did sign off and through these discussions and the paperwork, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Is there any other discussion before we vote? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Excellent. Moving on to new business tax refunds. Mr. Lombardi?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the tax refunds as presented in our package.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that passes. Appointments. Parking Authority is a manager appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I've been given the name of Stacy Dolan, and I hereby appoint her.
Okay, Stacy Dolan. Congratulations, Ms. Dolan. Thank you for sitting through this meeting, and congratulations on being appointed. If you could see the clerk, she can swear you in. Okay? And that is a manager appointment, so we don't need to vote on that. And I'm looking for a motion to table with the Senior Citizen Commission appointment.
I'll make that motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? No discussion, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that is tabled. And our last motion of the evening is to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.